Hey everybody, welcome to a poker coaching study session. We're going to be studying cash games. We're going to look at some marked hands. We might do some solver practice. And if we have time, I have something entertaining for you. Alright. So we'll start with some marked hands. We got Larry hands. Alright, Larry, you want to just take over the screen?
Yeah, that's fine.
Great.
Alright, uh, you guys see my screen?
Yep.
You can hear me? Obviously, um, alright, I'm just up here. Alright, so limper. We ISO. Um, pretty standard, I think.
Yep.
Uh, this hand's fast, so. You get this flop flop, I mean, there's. I think there's a number of draws available here for whatever limp calling range is.
I, alright, my, my mind is working slow for the math. Um, I just, I think the pre-flop should be 5.5.
The standard would be 5.5, but.
From small blind.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I agree. I'm giving an exploitative small size. I want to get called.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, with aces and kings, I'm going to use this size, but, but you're right. You're right, Joey, I think that.
There's no cut on global, right? He, unless they're actually watching you, they can't track you.
I'm sorry. Oh, no, yeah. Uh, they could take notes on global. I mean, he could, he could take a note on ISO sides. Um, so. Number of draws here, um. All of which were unblocking. So I choose a small size. I don't really want to generate folds. I mean, I have the best hand the great majority of the time here, I think. Now, this is the decision point. I'm curious what you guys think. So what are you guys doing here? So what's our SPR now? SPR is a little bit more than three.
Okay, um, sorry, I just got back, um, so. Uh, we're in a small blind with aces, I'm guessing it, uh, it went. Uh, open, uh, button open, we three bet, they called, and now they're. Uh, they, you're betting the flop and they raised?
No, he limped and Larry ISOed.
Okay.
Then he see bet and they, they check.
Well, I mean, I mean, they could have all the pairs, right? Sevens, maybe sixes, sevens, definitely, maybe not kings unless they're like. Wacko, but, um. I, I mean, it sucks that we don't have the ace of clubs, right? Well, I don't know, what do you guys think?
So I, I think here, we, we start with the idea that we're going to go broke on this hand when we're beat, right? We're not, we're, we're, when he has sevens, sixes, and seven, six, all of which are in his range, we get to go broke.
Why? Because there, there's a flush around the board? Is that why?
No, I'm, I'm thinking because, because of the SPR.
No, the SPR after the raise is still over three to one.
Okay, so you think we can get away, if we can get away from this, then we don't, then we don't need to three bet it?
Yeah, this, this is important for me because I've lost money with over pairs that I've, yeah, want to get away from.
Think about what player 0414 raise says. He says he has at least a good king. Or better. In his value range.
Yes.
So we beat a couple of his kings. We lose to sets, we lose to the two pairs.
But this is not, this is not a, uh, it's almost like a clickback, right?
No, it's almost 3X in position.
Yeah, it's a decent size.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'm seeing that wrong.
So we beat his flush draws and we're losing to his value, pretty much. He might have a couple of hands like king, queen, king, jack in his value that we beat. I mean, he could also be limping king, six, king, seven.
I mean, it makes sense because we could be wide from the small blind, right?
So we're ahead of his bluffs, but behind most of his value.
Yeah, and I think Sol was says it has a good tell issue there. Do the limpers raise with less, with less than two pair here? Do they raise just a king? Probably not. That's probably good. Okay, so there, so with that in mind. You call.
Yeah, I think you guys are right, um. So I have noticed that sometimes solver will fast play over pairs in this situation. Um, facing an imposition raise. With a hand that can be upped on. And, uh, I could have gone other way here, I think. I chose to just put him in. And he paid me.
Okay.
Nice.
But there's the answer, they do.
But I think that.
It'd have one of the hands I said.
Yeah. I think you guys, I think it's fine to, um. I think it's fine to just call here as well. Um, I think, but if he polarizes on turn and. It's a non-draw completing turn. Think sometimes you can check shove this.
If you're going to raise, why shove? That's like incredibly large.
Sort of, I mean.
It is large.
You only get called by better, right? But.
No, you don't, no, it's not true. You only get called by better. We've now seen that.
True, I mean, that is true.
Now, now pause. If I'm going to raise here. His stack has 86 left. You want to get about 30% of that in now. So. 25?
Yeah, I think 25. I think that's a good size. 25 shove most river, shove most.
I think I, in live poker against a limp. A limper. I still think I like just calling.
Yeah, I think that's fine too. Okay, let's say you call.
And then you might have to throw the white flag in when the eight of clubs hits.
Yeah, I, I, yeah. And let's say the turn was, let's say you call, and the turn was. Two of spades. And he. Pots it on turn. What's your play then on turn?
If you raise. If you raise to 25, he's going to have like. 60 left. And the pot's going to have 60.
Yeah. That's if we raise, but what if you call? Are you ever calling?
He's gonna, he's gonna have 70 left after the raise, but still.
Yeah, 70.
70, but still the pot's going to be, you're, I was just correcting the math, but yeah, the, the idea is right.
Are you ever, uh?
Alright, if you just call and there's a two of spades. Um. And then pot would be about 30.
Mm-hmm.
I think I would call the two of spades.
Okay. Yeah, I think, uh. I think the, I think the, I think that's a better play. I think that going two and a half is better here. And then shoving most rivers. Sorry, shoving most turns.
Yeah, I was gonna say, like, I, I don't mind the shove. I mean, I kind of like it. But as Joey said, I would rather be a little bit shorter, but, um.
It's a little bit of a suicide shove.
It worked out.
It's 300%. Whenever you're looking at 300% shoves, that's.
I mean, you're basically, you're saying like, that you're, you're turning your hand face up. I mean, you're saying that you have either, I mean, it's not like a flush. I mean, it's, uh, ace, ace, king or better, right? I mean, it's not like a flush draw, right? I mean.
I, yeah, it is, it is pretty face up. Yeah. But. I think what's happening here is I'm obviously, this is a limper, and so he's thinking absolute hand strength.
What was your judge, uh, judgment for shoving?
That he's a limper and he's, he's thinking about absolute hand strength, not relative hand strength.
Mm-hmm.
So he's got top pair. Okay kicker, so he's, he's ready to go with it.
I like it.
So I have a question, um, about, uh. An exploitative, a narrative strategy, and by that I mean.
Alright, well Larry, I'm sorry, go ahead, Scotty.
Oh, it's this. So what, when you shove, he has one decision to make. When you try to, when you go piecemeal, he has three exit points. He can exit at the check, he can exit at the three bet, he can exit at the bet on the turn, he can bet on the jam on the river. Is it true that people at this stakes? Are more likely to make the one, to make the one, you know, screw it decision? Than to. Uh, then to, I'm going to use a word that I don't know if this is the right word, than to piece off.
Yeah, that's a good question, um. And, you know. I'm not sure, and I think it depends on, on the, uh, on the player.
Yeah.
I think the, the other, the other, I'm sorry, go ahead, Scott.
It's just that, it's absolutely not a solver approved, approved idea. The solver doesn't care about that at all. But I wonder if it's a human thing.
Yeah, I think that sometimes we're a little bit too focused on. Solver play, because we're not playing against, I mean, especially these states, as you mentioned, we're not playing against someone who's playing a very solver savvy game. The other, let me just say this real quick, Skip. Uh, and the other point is, I also kind of hope he misvalues his draws here. His, his ace. I mean, this would be a really good play with ace, six of clubs. Like, is he going to misvalue ace, six of clubs here? Is he going to misvalue? I don't know, five, four of clubs. Five, four of clubs actually is 50/50. Is he going to misvalue three, two of clubs?
Alright, you're, you're also missing an important step here. Take it to an average 10, 20 player on global. You make it 25 and he shoves. What does he have in his range?
He's got to have. Well, he should have some combo draws and he should have king X. And he should have.
He's going to shove king X after you.
What's the pot?
After you three bet him? He's going to four bet king, king, jack.
Nope.
And he should have, and well, combo draws, I think would be a big part of it, and. Um, I don't think he's going to play sets that way. Um, at least I wouldn't play sets that way. Maybe bottom two pair. Which has some fragility.
Yeah, I agree, like, you would want to get the money in on the turn, right? Like, but do you guys think that villain is limping sixes and sevens? I mean, it's, that's a.
Yeah. He limped, he limped king, jack from the button.
So they're also limping sixes and sevens, they're not raising?
Yeah, basically. The loose pass of limpers, um. Medium pairs and lower are in range. Um. Some of them even have big aces, um, like ace, king, ace, queen. Um. Broadway hands. Like king, queen, king, ten, king, jack, queen, jack, queen, ten, stuff like that. Um, they'll have suited connectors, they'll have suited aces, they'll have. High, low suited Broadway cards. Hello?
Yeah.
And the evidence of this is sitting right in front of you. This is the limping range from the button. In, uh, 4,600 hands where someone limped the button. These were the hands they played.
I, yeah, that's pretty much what I just said. Broadway, suited, suited high lows. Suited connectors.
Yep, look where the king, jack falls.
Medium pair, I mean, even high pairs are in there. Too, way too much.
That's crazy.
Yeah, I would say that the guy who limps kings here to trap. Probably didn't limp and then just call them. He probably went for the limp re-raise, because that's so fun. Um, especially with king, yeah, especially with kings, because it's vulnerable to an ace falling. So for the, for the times that he limps his kings. I would say it's not 100% that he's going to just call them. I think a lot of those have been raised away.
And you could also see by this that there are some people that limp everything.
Yeah, yeah. I've been playing against people who limp their whole range, um, but here's your sixes. You know. Not the most common, but it's there. There's your six, there's your ace, six suited. And there's his king, jack, which is the one that is all over the place. That's, that's one of the higher ones.
Yeah, this is, this is great information that you guys made.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, to finish this off, I think you're right. I think that, uh, I think the ideal size XR there for an XR is, uh. Is about two and a half to his sizing. Um, I, I do like an XR there because of the draw heavy board. Uh, which is going to pay you, and then.
Well, you also have to remember, he already out, if he's on a draw. He already made himself pay a larger price than he should have.
Agreed, yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, I think that, I think the, a better play there would have been. Your sizing, which I think is a good choice, and then. We're going to have SPR of about one on turn. And then you can shove most turns. Or maybe you can go like a B50 and milk them a little bit.
Hey Scotty, can you mute me for a second?
Yep. Hey. To do this, I, to do this, I will be muting everybody. Here we go, and then you can re unmute yourself. Let me find the mute everyone, but there we go.
Yeah, I think it's better to talk with the button either way, I think.
Oh, wait, wait, there I can do it. There, okay.
Use the masses.
He's muted. Alright, good.
Okay, um, so, yeah, who has another, another, I can do another hand or someone else?
Yep, anybody who wants to, we're going to look at marked hands for a while, so anybody who has a marked hand, put it into the chat. But for now, we'll do Larry's next hand.
Alright, so we want to see some marked hands, man. Usually bring good ones.
Yeah.
That was, that was my motivational speech, how to go.
Nicely done.
Um, this is an interesting cock hand, I think. So. Blind versus blind. Standard open. Uh, we flop pretty well. Uh, I check a lot in this situation, I mean, so. And we've seen Soler do this, where there's a lot of checking with the entire range.
Mm-hmm.
Blind versus blind, when you are out of position. When people have 300 different combos.
Yep. This check call.
He bets. Um, what are you guys doing here?
Call.
So I think, I look at this and I say XR, right? We've got front door draw. Second pair and a backdoor draw. Sure, I'm pretty sure, because that's what I did here. He calls, uh, not the greatest card. Uh, well, good for us, but also gets a straight in. You bet. Uh-oh. What are you guys doing here? He, he two X this imposition.
He's got 55 more behind. Paul.
Uh.
Yeah, I think you call here, so let's work out the pot odds real quick. So. Pot, it's the pot after I. Pot now is 44, right?
Mm-hmm.
And. I've got to call. Like 45.
Got to call another 30, another 30, uh, 35.
35, sorry.
35 into a pot that will be. 100, he, I mean, he's basically, he's, he's betting half of that pot, so need 25% equity, straight up, and.
Yeah, yes, we can't fold here.
Alright, I'm back, what's, can we quickly review this hand?
Sure.
Yeah.
We open, uh, we get this really good spot. I choose check raise.
And I'm voting check call there.
Yeah, I'm check call.
Yep.
We have marginal made, you always play your marginal value instead of your potential value.
Yep.
Okay, fair enough. I thought this was a good XR spot.
There's a reason, there's a reason for that too. Um. You're te, like, 35% of the time, you're going to improve. 65% of the time, you're going to the river with a pair of tens. But now, once you raise, your pair of tens is no good anymore. So now you're depending on hitting the draw to win the hand.
Because he's not calling worse to the check rates.
Yeah.
He could have a worse, I mean, with these wide ranges, he could have a worse draw. He's got a worse spades.
It doesn't feel.
Yeah, you're, you're depending on hitting the draw. Yeah, he could have spades, but. For the most part, his value range. You're, you're behind all of it now.
Yeah, I see your point. I think you have a good point.
Your 10 could still be ahead of some of his bluffs.
Okay, yeah, I can see that. Yeah, we've got, yeah, we've got marginal value here. I see your point. I think that's a good point.
But I think we do need to call this raise with, with our draw.
So we turned additional equity. So I think generally the rule is if you turn additional equity. With, with your semi, with your semi bluff here. You continue.
I'm going to argue against that when you're done.
Okay.
But, but that is your thinking, and so we want it, we want to hear that.
And he had the queen nine, which we were blocking.
Yeah.
And he didn't, he's got the, he's got the nuts, by the way, and he checked that. He has the, he has the taps.
He's afraid of full house.
I guess it's a paired board, so he could be worried that I have a boat.
Yeah, he left you some money. That was nice of him. So, so Joey's point, I think is really valuable. It's that simplification. So the solver might have some check raises here, but you can certainly simplify this hand and look at it and go. It is marginal made with a draw, and whenever you have both those, I'm just repeating you, Joey. Um, for emphasis. Uh, whenever that is, the marginal made is the more important component. Now, if you decide to go against that theory and go, yeah, but it's such a good draw, and it's just barely marginally made. And it, we're blind versus blind and screw this guy, and you do your check raise. And he calls, you go, okay, when that turn comes. You are super marginally made now, because he called. When he calls your check raise, your 10 has, you know, it's the way he said it, so now you're nothing but marginally made. And the fact that you increased, uh, increased your equity, that rule is for bluffs. And again, you're putting your bluff part of it over your marginally made part of it.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Twice is how you get, how you get raised here.
I, I agree. I think, uh, that raise on the turn is going to be more value versus bluffs, because.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, just overwhelmingly, after you've check raised, he's going to decide to raise a draw. On the turn, that the most expensive thing, on a hand that you've made it clear that you, that you're willing to jam when you're in your, the value part of your range?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think this is maybe a better.
Mm-hmm.
Check caller. Yeah, you guys have good points.
Yeah.
I think you have really good points. I think that, I, I, uh. This is just marginal value.
The more pre-flop you get, like, pre-flop, uh, is going to be the most, you know. There's going to be more bluffs as you get to the river, um, there's going to be like less draws and less bluffs.
Yep.
I don't know if I said that right.
Yeah, this is something I learned with the solvers and from listening to Jonathan and his videos. Because. 2017, 2018, this was the right way to play those hands. But. With the more recent studying and GTO and the newer videos Jonathan put out. He started showing this way, playing it as a marginal made instead of the. The potential of the.
The nut potential.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, I'm, I'm not really sure if I agree with Scotty on the turn. Um, his thinking is we have marginal made hand on the turn. I think after you bluff. With a check raise on the flop. I don't know if tens are marginal made anymore, or if they fall into junk. And you do want to bluff.
Good point. We're going to solve this one.
Okay, well, you guys, uh.
Yeah.
Okay, we can do that. Let me just, uh, hand it back to you for a minute and I'll set it up.
You set that up? Great, and I will display the limping, the limping strategy again. And discuss what it means here to people who haven't seen it. Alright. Show screen. So this was made right here by Yoss. Thank you, Yoss, off of data of mine from Ignition. Where they give us the hands at the end. You can download the, all the hands and see everyone's hands. So we looked through some, several hundred thousand hands of mine and extracted this many times that people open limped. And he then put them in this range. The numbers here, the 100% doesn't mean that people limp queen 10 100% of the time. Or that, what it means is that queen 10 was limped the most, and then he just assigned a value of 100 to the most, so you could get an easy number. So what you can use this number for, this 100 here, is you can say if there's a 50, like the eight, seven suited. That queen, uh, queen 10 offsuit was limped twice as often as eight, seven suited. That's what the 100 tells you. That's how often. And here they are, and you can see how they concentrate in this. Lower Broadway region. And this is across the different positions.
This is what I find most interesting about these, is that there's no positional awareness here, right?
Uh, no, it does change. It does change with position. Uh, take a look.
Well, let's go, let's go look at the, let's go look at the extreme then. Let's look at, um, EP, right?
Yeah, EP is, EP is a, EP the node down here, the, the pairs node lies at EP. So they do, so they do a lot of pairs EP. And your suited aces go there, whereas these offsuit aces are not as much.
Scotty, is it possible?
Then let's go look at button real quick.
Is it possible you can link this in chat?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll put the, I'll, I'll put the file in chat right now. Okay, and you're, so, and then on the button, you just get, it's just the, uh. The weight of the nodes is a little different, but, but it's still, there are the three areas, four areas.
How many were you on?
This is the broadways, the, uh. Low, the low pairs. And the small blind, we ignore, because people play the small blind limp. That's fine. And I will put this in.
Does everybody in here know about, um, split suits, sweenys? Um. Hand reading. Methodology?
Talk about it.
Um. He categorizes hands. And I use this at the table a lot, um. Actually, give me a few minutes. I will go to. PC.com range thing, and I'll make a range chart for it.
Excellent, thanks, man. And I've just uploaded to, into the chat, the, that ignition file.
There you go. While we're at it, I will show you something from. I'll show you guys something from split suit that I use often. He has this, uh. He has a pot odds calculator.
Mm-hmm.
Website. That works very quickly, so you could just put in like. What the current. Pot size is, and then what the bet is that you're facing. And it'll give you your pot odds quickly. It is a really slick tool, but it's so fast. It is a really slick tool, but it's so fast.
I like his fold equity calculator.
Yeah, he's got that in here, too.
Could, like, pot odds, I just do in my head so quickly. I don't need.
Well, not yet, but not everyone is as experienced as you. I thought I'd share. Alright, let's see what we're doing here, um. You guys see the hand?
Yep, we can see the hand, but not in the solve.
Okay, and then here's a solve, so. Yeah, it's, it's four hundred combos each.
Hmm.
It's a couple, oh, a couple, less. So we're gonna check everything in range here. As we usually big blind versus blind. Um, what's our equity with queen? So we have queen ten with the front door draw. Um. And we've got. A lot of. We've got a lot of. I do this. Do this. Pair that to like. Oh, I can't see it cuz. Far here. Yeah, we got a lot of equity. Um. So. This might be actually too much equity to check raise. So we. We choose to check.
Which is the vast majority of the, uh, the whole range does some checking, and the queen ten suited does a lot of checking. Specifically.
Let's go back and look at that more carefully.
Yeah. When you bet the queen, when you bet out, it's the queen ten of spades that does it the most, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And it's a small size.
It does not, it's not, it doesn't care about, excuse me, I'm eating. It does not care about getting, uh, raised, I guess.
Um.
The queen, the king queen.
Well, it's calling most raises. Yeah. Queen ten spades. Yeah, it's Chris's super complex strategies we saw yesterday.
Yeah.
Um, so we check. Now the question is, we get check raises. He used a B fifty. That might not be a thing. I'm. Used the fifth, so. He used to be, like, almost more than the B fifty with this. He's got, yeah, he's got the.
He's.
Open ender. He's got the jack nine.
Uh, no, queen nine. Queen nine off.
Oh, sorry, queen nine, yeah, you're right, um. Yeah, he gets bets, he gets bets all sizes.
Well, he had. He had queen nine of clubs, didn't he?
I don't, you're a better man. I have a horrible memory, I'll be right. Uh. And, yeah, he gets all sizes, so he gets this. What part of his range? He's getting, this is like. He certainly gets the sizing with, um.
Yep.
And like, yeah, he certainly gets the sizing, so he gets. And also, this is a larger sizing, so we might not get check raises here. But first, we gotta crack cases. We ten. Yeah, we don't get check raised. Well, we do.
If, if you do it, you do it there, but it's, it's the minority play.
But it is a minority play, but we, we get to do it a little bit. So I'm, I'm within solver. It, it chooses a bigger size to you. That's important.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it, it's got, it has an option of choosing a raise nine or raise fifteen. And it chooses a XR to fifteen, so it went a lot bigger than us. So I'm gonna give it what solver chooses.
Well, you did raise nine. It's in there. Cuz you.
Yeah, but it's not in there for a combo.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, there's a little.
Liver, point seven, doesn't break the solve.
Alright, okay, we'll choose ways not. Uh, what's he supposed to do with this open ender? Why is he supposed to just call? He had nine, or queen ten, no, he had.
Queen nine.
He not.
Queen nine.
Queen nine of not spades.
They just call. Now, this is the question, right? We get the.
Eight of diamonds.
The horrifying eight of diamonds.
What do we do with that queen ten?
I'm gonna be checking it, I bet. Oh, no.
Mostly.
Joey is right, and I was wrong.
Yeah, we're polarizing.
Yeah.
Um. And I would imagine we're polarizing a lot here. Because he hardly ever makes this play.
So it's like. Queen ten spades is kind of indifferent now with it.
Yeah. No, I was.
It's, it's kinda borderline now.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty close. It's pretty close.
Switch to, switch to strategy instead of strategy plus EV, just, just for a second, so that I can say that I was. Eight percent more right than Joey.
Now, I'm curious how far we go.
I did not say in absolutes, though. I said it's impossible.
Yeah.
So. I was sure.
So this is interesting. We're giving up with our zero equity. Our no equity XR is here. So I, stuff like threes. A six, this is all giving up to the very bottom. So once we filter his range and he can get a call. Very bottom of his range is like, I'm out. Very bottom of our range is, is I'm out, but then. Yeah, beyond that, we are getting. There's stuff like these queens continuing. Over pairs, so, um. Okay, so then this is the other question. So we. We choose eighteen to the size, it's about what we're getting in hand. In game. We, we bet. What's he supposed to do with his main straight? He's probably supposed to shove. His size probably is not a thing. Um. Let's just go to breakdown quick. He can slow play. So no, he, he gets to, he gets to make this play. Yeah, so he makes, he makes this play, he makes a raise. To forty-eight, which is about what he chose in game.
Yeah.
So he raises forty-eight with his straight correctly.
Yep.
Uh, raise forty-eight. What are we doing with our queen ten?
I don't think we're folding.
I don't think we're folding it.
Nope, not with the cutter and the flush draw.
Yeah, we, we are either, um. Either calling or shoving with the two.
And mostly calling, so. Everything you did was solver approved. But the, uh, more conservative play were the, were the main lines. In both, both places.
Yeah, agreed, yeah.
Yeah.
So, um. We call. And. It was. And he's never supposed to. Check this back, even though the board pair.
No, we got lucky.
I'm sure of it. We're always supposed to check. We don't have any dunks. We might have dunked cuz the board pair. I don't think so, then. We do have dunks. So we dock our overpair. If anybody wants to.
Because, because his count, because his jack ten got counterfeited, and his ten eight got counterfeited.
Yeah, yeah, that's a very good point. You're right. We're always slow playing our. We're always slow playing, um. Is that a position? We're always slow playing our house. But if we have straights, we have his hand, we're supposed to dunk it.
Right.
Dunk shove.
And when we check and he sh, and he shoves, which I, we assume he's supposed to do, we'll see if he ever supposed to check a straight.
And so, and we're also supposed to. And you've got a good point, Scott. He, he just, his two pairs just got counterfeited, so we're going to shove. Our overpair. Uh, okay, and then.
Our kings, not our kings. Because the queen.
Ten is always checking.
Queens block the straight, kings don't.
I'll give the point.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have a good point. Um. How far down, where is this threshold to value shove?
All the steps.
Oh, yeah, even, even in air. And even his trips.
Mm-hmm.
Shoving. Top pair shove, he's, he's supposed to. Shove, is there, these are two pair.
Yeah. Cuz these beat eight, these, these lose to queens, but they beat, uh, ace ten. I mean, they beat ace jack.
Yeah.
Still.
There we go. And then he's got order his buffs. So he's got busted FDs, he's supposed to turn into.
Right.
Shoves.
So you, but, yeah, so you bluff the front door, uh, in this case. So when he jams. You just fold your queen ten, or is there any hero calling in this nonsense? And you would have folded to a jam here, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I think the stacks might have been different.
I'm sure they were, yeah.
Hey, just fold queen ten.
Yeah, fold, yeah, you've gotta, you can hear with. These two top, top two, you can hear with ace jack, that's it. What's, okay, well, put this one to bed. Let's just look at the. So we'll get the EV of ace ten. That'd be zero. That's a clear call. This is, I think, is a artifact of the fact that it's blind versus blind. The Wild West, as we call it, so. Anything else you guys wanna see in this song?
No, I, I want to know people's opinion on, oh, sorry, you were saying?
No, no, um, yeah, I'm, I know, what do you, uh. Are you guys supposed to be, uh, shoving your, uh, missed, uh, ace high flush draws, or maybe just the worst? That was my, my question.
Yeah, let's take a, yeah, take a look at what, which, which broken, uh. This is the big blind. This is his bluffs.
So you wanna know his, his bluffs, right?
Yeah, what were, what were you gonna say, Scotty?
No, I mean, so no, we do the, we, we do the lower ones. The ace nine doesn't do it.
Uh, so we do get, we do.
That's my guess.
You wanna know ace high flush draws that miss, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, like ace high, maybe, king, ace high, king high, maybe, cuz I know.
Uh, he doesn't have very many, but it looks like he's checking them, but.
Yeah.
Um.
Same with the king.
Yeah, he's just checking them.
Yeah. The aces check, the queens love the shove because they block the straight. And down at the bottom, it's the nine, six that's dead. And it's mimicking seven.
Are we making a mistake when we do with the king, the missed the kings, or?
We don't have them.
We don't have it.
We don't have.
We just have a king nine.
We don't do it. King is, king is good enough to maybe sometimes squeeze out, who knows?
So the, so. We're, I, I don't think shoving with the. Your king high, but, but, uh, busted flush draw is the worst. Um, but we're supposed to just deal with, with our queens. Our queens are shoving. Bluff shoving, here.
And the nines.
And. Nine, high, we check, we're a combo draw. And I guess block the straight. That's on board. I could find it with the. The nine, the nines here, because. The nine X of spades because we're blocking the nuts.
And then look at, look at third pair, too, like if eight, seven of spade, like that's.
Yeah, good point. Yeah, so this all. So we're shoving, this is all blocking the, the nuts.
Right, the nines, yep, and then keep, blocks the queens.
And this, this blocks bluff as well. This blocks the. Nuts, right?
Yeah. And then the seven, eight, something else. It, it scam blocks the nine, seven a little bit. This is an example, I think, where, um, with our thing saying at lower stakes, um, blockers don't matter. I think this is an example that shows that they do, and I think that this is realistic to, uh. The real ranges as opposed to just solver ranges. On this hand, does anybody have an opinion as to why this solve is not particularly applicable? Cuz I think this solve is, is, is dead on applicable to the real world, how this was played and how it gets played.
I mean, yeah, I think, I think it's, uh. I think it is real world, because we saw him fast play his. Uh, his turn value.
Mm-hmm.
On turn. So I do think it's, I do think it's applicable.
Yep. On this one, I mean, if you say they don't have as many bluffs, I think we still have to call the queen ten with the, with the pair and the draw. And those kinds of things, yeah. So Joey, you wanna talk about, um, the thing you posted? I'll, I'll put it up for everybody to see.
Yeah, give me one more second. I'm doing another one.
Oh, okay, I'll wait.
Um. Actually, I'm done. Let me just copy this and.
Okay.
Export and copy this and.
Okay.
Alright, let me put this second one in chat.
Uh, what's, what's this for?
That's what we're gonna find out.
Okay, this first one. Is, um. James Split Suit Sweeney. His, um. Hand reading methodology. He groups the hands into these five groupings. Um, the red is the premium hands. Blue is pairs, then the Broadway hands. Then the speculative hands in black, and then. The others in junk is the orangish yellow.
Mm-hmm.
Whenever you have an opponent. Um, and you're in the hand, you, when you think of his starting range. He's, you go through, how many premium hands does he have? If he opened raised, he has all of them. And then you go right down the line. How many pairs does he have? And you keep that in mind. This is like your starting point for hand reading. And the Broadway hands and speculative hands, and then junk. You think in your mind, how much of each range does my opponent have? And that's basically how he starts his hand reading, and then. You know, with hand reading, you eliminate hands as the hand goes on. And the second one that I added, if you wanna bring that up.
Bring that up now.
Um. Yeah, expand it. This is my, from my years of experience playing poker. Obviously, we saw from Scotty's chart that. Every hand is a possibility to be lived at some point. But basically, in red. Is what a lot of the limpers have. They have the Broadways, aces, suited hands. And medium pairs.
Yeah.
Every limper is different. Some people will limp tens and jacks as well. Or they might raise nines and eights and start limping at sevens. But for the most part, this is what I have seen in limping ranges. In my twenty years of playing.
Right.
Um. The blue is when you get like the whale limpers, like the really, really bad limpers, they start adding that grouping of hands.
Yeah.
And then the trim, tricky limbs come from the top.
Yeah, and I'm gonna put up that at the same time as the other, uh, limping range. Just so we can compare them, cuz they're not there. They're pretty close. Ignition limping ranges. Don't open my social security file. YouTube. So looking at, let's look at them. Let's look at their MP. MP's a good one to look at here. It's a little bigger. So there's those MP, there's the MP limps compared to what? Stop it. Yeah, and this opening shape here, which in my mind is an R, this is the small letter R, and that's real.
Yeah, I can see that.
Yeah, that's, that's gonna be common across all of. The positions. And Joey's got that major. The difference that we see compared to Joey's from my data is how much heavier. These low pairs are and how they are reverse linear.
Well, that's why I said.
Yeah.
Every person's limping pairs. Will start at a different hand.
Right. But just saying, just saying to, to look at this, um, on our data. These are just the refinements we get with it, with the tighter data there. And the drop between the aces limped and the kings is extreme.
Yeah, like, to me, I assume that if you round all these numbers up, they're gonna, they're. They're gonna be like fifty percent or more or less. It's, it's not an exact number, right? The percentage, it's just like what hands are doing it more than others.
Yeah.
I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so, yeah, this is good, and if I were, if I were redoing. This, I would make a, I would do a purple range, which is of the reds, which are the ones that are done the most. And you would have, you'd have the R. Here. The low pairs. And the aces more than the rest of this. That would be the, that would be. And the aces more than the rest of this. That would be the, that would be.
Yeah, I, I was thinking about doing it like a, a tight limping range, then a wider limping range, and then.
Yeah.
So like if, if I did a tighter limping range, I would take out like the suited jacks, suited queens. Um, suited kings, little bit down the, the king two suited.
Yeah.
Um, and then maybe this two gapped might come out.
Yeah.
The two gap suited.
So um as an aside, which spot proportionally has the most ace trap lips? Is there a spot where people do it the most?
Uh, Jonathan Little says early position, it's done most, but our, our data doesn't answer that, does it? Let's see.
I have seen it in early position, more than later position.
Yeah.
But.
I, I imagine ace king.
These are sometimes fish, so.
Forty-nine, forty-two, forty-nine, mid-position.
And you gotta remember, there are some people so bad, they don't even open raise ace king because it's a drawing hand. I did air quotes there with that because.
We heard them.
Yeah, I would assume.
Yeah, you said you saw that it parks a lot, right?
N- not a lot, but more than once.
Yeah.
More than, more than enough I could count on my hands.
Yeah. Right.
Y'all know how many times I've isolated with ace queen, flopped an ace, triple barreled, and I was pissed off when he turned over ace king. And he never raised me anywhere in the hand.
Unbelievable.
Just called all the way down.
Yeah.
He limped called ace king pre-flop and then called triple barrel. And uh.
Good. Congratulations to you.
Congratulations to me, I just lost a stack with versus an ace king that should have never been there.
Oh, I didn't realize you stacked, I didn't realize you got the full stack. I thought that you lost a little bit less money. Okay.
No, I triple back, well, maybe I didn't lose a stack, but.
You're easily exploitable, Joey.
Yes. Alright, let's uh, let's do another uh, Larry's the only one who's got another hand in there, so we'll do another Larry hand.
Alright, that's fine. Um, I will share another hand.
Stop sharing.
Thank you, sir, I have another. Let me see which uh.
We're on your third, I think we'd be on your third, fourth.
Let me just uh choose which one is probably the best for the group. This is a weird one, alright, this looks good.
And, oh, and Mike, you don't need to post them, if, if you've got them, we'll just give you the screen.
Yeah, that'll work because I'll do them in the replayer.
Okay, do, do you have it ready?
Uh, I do.
Okay, let's do it, we'll, we'll, let's uh ignore Larry and do Mike.
Oh, no, okay. That's fine, we can do, let's do Mike, I've already done two.
Come on, it's ace queen. Maybe, maybe you're up against a limp ace king, let's see what happens if you lose your stack.
Alright, Mike, do you mind if I show this?
Oh, absolutely, no, please do.
This is actually an interesting one. Um. So, what are you guys doing here?
Squeeze.
Yep, raise.
Yeah, I think it's pure squeeze. Um, the size is too small.
Six, eight, eight, nine and a half. You're, you're big.
That's not bad.
You're, you're extra big.
Oh, yeah, I'm in, I'm sorry, I thought I was out of position. Yeah, this, I think this is fine.
Yeah.
Uh, it is a little, a little bit. Uh, and then we get the freaky flat. Here.
Freaky flat.
And we're in position, that's good. Alright, what are you guys doing here?
Uh, definitely betting, um. We don't need a size up, uh, you know, the big blind can have pairs that they uh just flatter with, right? Hopefully not deuces or threes, um, yeah. Yeah, just see that small.
Alright, I'd step away to get my son. His lunch.
No worries. This is a, a weird hand because so, yeah, I think this is our, a little bit oversized squeeze. I think, I think eleven is probably the default here.
I think nine and a half is the default.
Okay.
Nine, eleven, yeah.
Alright, I, I'm maybe have been uh exaggerating a bit, I'm looking at too many solves here. We get a, a flat, which should never be happening. Here. I don't remember what happens in this hand, by the way. Get a call. We're now three ways and we've got a pretty good flop. Now. First question, I think we can largely discount ace king, maybe some ace kings. Could play this way. At least six. Um. What size are you guys gonna use here?
Just small size, twenty-five percent, but ten, eleven, twelve, whatever.
Like ten? Yeah, I like ten. I don't know what I do, let's see.
Yeah.
I, so I checked, now I checked, I think on the principle that this is a really dry board. Uh, no one should have, someone couldn't have five four, but it's doubtful. And uh we're at the, we're almost at the very top of our range. And I, go ahead.
The only reason I don't like a check is because you're pretty deep here with both of these players.
Yeah.
So you're saying you want to take one pair to the mat in a multi-way pot?
Are you asking me? Who said?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm going to take it on the flop for sure. Not necessarily three streets.
He did see bet, right?
No, he checked. And that's, yeah, that's why I was like, on the flop here, I like a small bet. I wouldn't mind checking if we were somewhat shallower, but I think we're pretty deep here and we have.
Oh, no, he's, you're in position, you, you bet here on the flop.
Okay, yeah, I think I, I just finished the multi-way advanced.
Ten to twelve. Ten to twelve, seems about right.
Yeah, I think being in a position, we can, we can definitely bet here. Um, I think my motivation in game was that pretty dry board and someone could have four, five, but it's doubtful. Uh. And this guy probably isn't, isn't gonna flat five, four suited.
Yeah, now sixteen fifty-nine is, is your five, four suited, if anyone, I think.
Yeah, and so, um. I, I think I'm, I think I, there's, there's just, we don't really need any protection on this board. And so I am checking for that reason, because I don't think this is. I'm not sure this is good enough for three streets.
I completely agree, I mean, I.
It might not be three streets, but definitely the flop, try to get one of them out.
Yeah, so you, you like, you like uh, I think the term is uh clearing equity here.
Yeah, multi-way pots, yeah.
Okay, I can see that.
Especially in position.
Yes, you can check more heads up because imagine a player one five, uh, one six, five, nine limped sevens and now you check and the seven comes in turn, you know.
If you get one of them to fold and check it down, your ace has a much better chance of winning.
Yeah, I could see clearing that. I agree with that, I think, I think you've got a good point. Um.
Yep.
But um, skate, I think I'd bet, I'd bet more here if this was heads up. Um, just because of I think, I think equity dispersal is the term. I mean, our equity is a lot less multi-weighted here than it is uh heads up, but we have a lot of equity here, obviously.
So when they do, uh, I'll flop you, you lose less, kind of thing?
Well, it's just a matter of how often statistically, the probability of us getting outfought. I mean, there, the, there's now the probability of one of these guys having threes times two.
So. And when you're up against sixes and eights, the odds of them hitting their miracle set are twice as big when you leave both of them in there.
Yeah, so there's an argument to go both ways. Um. But also I think there's an argument to be made that when we go check, check, when we go check here and we're in position.
Every ace.
We're gaining information from their checks. Right? We now know a little bit, we now know that both the ranges are capped.
No, not yet, we don't.
No, when he, when we check, he means when we check and we go.
Yeah, after we check the flop, now when they.
Now, sorry, you're right.
Yeah, that's where we get.
Yeah, so that, so this guy bets.
Right.
So. Uh. Now this is getting interesting.
Yeah.
I don't really remember how this hand ends up. I don't think we're folding here.
No, you're just.
So you, you can, so this is, this is um a potential place to exit early. You're right, I don't think we get to fold quite yet though. But.
But you're in a multi-way pot, you only have one pair. Both of them checking to you on the flop is standard. When there's a bet and a call in a multi-way pot, I don't care how good your pair is. It's kind of rubbish now.
Yeah, I, I see your point. I also think that sometimes humans will uh bluff at this big pot.
I mean, you had, you had your chance and missed it on the flop.
Alright.
And now that you got here like this, you're just guessing that your ace is still good.
True, but there's also going to be a lot of aces that we beat here, right? We're gonna beat ace jack, ace ten, ace nine, ace six.
One pair of hands don't usually win multi-way pots.
Joey, are you suggesting we fold right now?
I seriously think about it.
Yeah.
I've saved so much money just by playing so nitty on, in spots like this. I'd, you're playing against weaker players, I'd rather take spots where I'm more confident than guessing in multi-way pots. Especially if you got yourself into a spot by misplaying a previous street.
I, I sort of agree with Joey, I mean, the player I am most worried about here is player one six, five, nine. When he just flats here on the turn with one more player left to act, uh, which is us, the pre-flop raiser, that's a little bit concerning.
If the big blind bet and the other player called, it's, it's a call. But when there's multi-way action, even if you're against two draws, you're still an underdog.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm much more worried about, about, oh, by the way, uh, skate, I'm much more worried about O five, O five, because he called the bet, the bet call raise. He was the one who jumped in there when he didn't have to, so he scares me a lot.
Yeah, maybe.
My, my, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm not folding this yet, I wouldn't, I didn't want to play at this line, but as played, I'm losing eighteen big blinds before the river and then seeing what happens. Not saying it's right, saying what it's, I'm doing, who I like that, who I don't like that.
See?
Simple fold.
And there's a seven.
That's, that's why I was worried about this, this player.
Well done.
Right, results, results fine, but you, you can't fold the flop.
No, I didn't say the flop, the turn.
Or, I mean, you can't fold, you can't fold the turn, you can fold the river, but you can't fold this flop.
You definitely.
I mean, the turn, I mean.
It, it's just, I know people think I'm nitty, but I've seen this over and oh, so many hands. And I, in the discord. So many, I've played hands like this for twenty years. One pair of hands in a contested multi-weighted pot just suck. You might be ahead.
If you ran the ranges here, he's got so many other hands that you beat than just a set, than just a set of two threes or sevens. And the odds that you're getting on that bet are well worth the call.
No, it's not. I, I I mean, you could trust my experience, like I've coached and this this is going back years, this is the thought of multi-way pots. If there's two players fighting for a multi-way pot, you don't want to be in there with one pair. One pair does not win multi-way pots when they're contested. If you start looking for that, you'll find more often than not one pair of hands. Now, if it goes check, 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 one pair of hands is pretty strong. But once there's, once the pot is contested, one pair is pretty weak in a multi-way pot.
Yeah, the only. Yeah, I was just gonna say, uh, pitch in real quick. I agree, hundred percent. The only argument I have against that is if there is draws available on the flop where people still want to continue.
Yes, but remember, but remember the thing Joey pointed out, when you're up against another ace, when you're up against a worse ace and a real draw, the number of outs against you, because the other ace has his three outs, then the draw has all their outs. You're not the favorite in the hand. I mean, you're not over fifty percent to win the hand. Now you are, you, you have the most equity of the three of them.
Yeah.
You know, so, so that's the point there. I think we've, I think everybody's made their point on this one. Um.
And then just what, what happened, Larry, Larry threw another bet in at the end.
Yeah.
I didn't throw a bet.
He lost two.
No, I mean, you couldn't, meaning, meaning you couldn't get away from it. You, you went, once it went, once it went check bet. You, you, you paid off the other, it means you paid off another bet.
No, to me, I, when I saw that, I said snap hold.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think, I think you got a good point. I mean, that's why I brought this, I think there's some errors here. I think, I think you're right. I mean, we would have probably cleared out. And what sizing are you gonna use here? Are you gonna use like a ten or fifteen? What size are you gonna use, Scott, uh, Joey?
Twenty-five to thirty-five percentage, so ten to fifteen.
Yeah.
So probably like, if you're playing live, if you're playing live, use the ten or the fifteen. If you're playing online, you could do like thirteen point three, 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 three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, that's so funny, I'm.
I think that's a good sizing here. Um. I think that, yeah, I would, obviously I let this guy get here. Um. I think that would have been a good play. And then I see your point, so Jonathan, he, Jonathan Little in, in the advanced cash game course does talk about exiting early, right? And this is an opportunity to exit early. Very hard to fold this hand. Um, but when we're in a multi-way as uh, sorry, but contested pot, there's a place for it, right?
Yeah, yeah, because like, but it's kind of funny, what I, what I said exactly came uh true, sixteen fifty-nine limped sevens and it came on the turn because we checked.
Absolutely.
Bar Hanson talks about this, this, this sandwich, this guy in the middle, when he calls, like hi- his range is like so strong.
Well, theoretically, he's supposed to call.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the pot odds here are like, we're, it's like we're getting like, it's like, we're, you only need to win this like quarter of the time. To this sizing, I mean, this is milky sizing with what he knows is the absolute nuts. Uh, because no one has four, five there. Is, we're, we're always supposed to win one out of, we only need to win one out of four times, we're too profitable, so.
So let's play this one out in our heads. Um. It goes, so on the flop, it's gonna go check, check, and Larry's gonna bet um ten to, ten to fifteen big blinds. Player O five, O five is gonna call with his ace, whatever it is. And player sixteen fifty-nine is then probably gonna fold his sevens.
We, we didn't see player O five, O five's hand.
No, I know, I'm, I'm, I'm playing, I'm, I'm, I'm gaming it out.
I mean.
We don't know this is what's gonna happen.
It could be one of those players that bets the turn just because everybody checked.
Yeah, it, yeah. But assume, but it, but if it goes like this, Joey, if it goes check, check, bet, fold, fold, we're done. So when it goes check, check, we bet and player O five, O five calls. And then player sixteen fifty-nine, most of the time folds his sevens, we like that. On the turn, when player O five, O five checks, do we check behind to induce a, to induce a bet to call on the river? And then if he checks the river, we, we bet, we bet thin value? Or do you bet the turn again? And then if he calls, maybe not bet the river depending on the runout? Or are you trying to get, or, or are you gonna try to get all of it in against the one player who called us?
No, I, I don't want to, I don't want to put my stack in when it started in multi-way.
Good.
Um. I feel probably had, if, if you get heads up, you probably have two streets of value.
Right.
You're in position, so if you bet the turn, you're most likely going to get checked to on the river. And then you could check behind and take your winnings.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if you check, he may bluff a little more on the river.
Mm-hmm.
Trying to steal it with any hand that he may have had that missed.
Right.
Um. So I think that's player dependent. If he's only going to be. If he's only going to be honest on the river, then I think I would bet the turn and try to buy the check on the river. If he's somebody who I think will try to win the pot after I check, then I'll go and check call mode for the river.
And I want to go bet, check, bet as opposed to bet, 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 check. And here's my reasons, don't know if they're right. Um, I want to get two streets of value, not three, because I think when I get three streets of value, I lose. Just the thing with the same thing that Joey said, that he doesn't want to get a stack in in a pot where three people started, so I want to do that. On the turn, I don't know whether or not my check is going to induce a bluff or not. But when he bets, I get my second street with that, which includes bluffs, and I get to call it. It also includes hands that he overvalues, like, oh, I don't have an ace because I've, because of, because I checked the turn. I know one would ever check a turn in his mind, I'm hoping. When he, so he bets his worst ace and I get to call it, which would have happened the same way. He has some bluffs sometimes, I get to call them. And when he checks, I get to get the value of my ace and I bet it. And I get to take the very lovely thing of having a bet, check, bet that isn't a bluff on the river. Because the most bluffed line, we believe, is bet, check, bet. And so in his mind, when he sees back, check, bet, he goes, oh, I wouldn't have checked the ace, and so he called me with the ace. Some of his races might fold the turn, not just because I bet again, but because they know another bet is coming. When they see the geo bet on the turn, they go, I'm getting river, I'm getting river shoved, and I'm just not gonna go there with my ace ten. So they might fold the turn with their ace ten, not just fold the river. So that's my thoughts of why going bet, check, bet rather than uh bet, bet, check.
That's all precluded on uh getting a heads up on turn, right?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, if it goes three ways, it's a hundred percent check.
If you see bet and they both call, I'm not putting a bet out on turn, no matter what car comes, unless it's maybe the ace of hearts.
Queen. Queen's nice.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, unimproved, if you, if you see bet and they both call, I don't know if I want to put another penny in unimproved.
Cool, good hand.
Maybe if it gets, maybe if it the check, turn checks through, and then one player bets, the second player folds, then you could think about looking them up with your top pair.
Yeah. Let's take a look at Mike's hand.
Four hands. Excuse me, stand by.
Okay.
Do you see?
Yep, we can see it.
Okay, uh, so this first one is kind of a more of a theory thing. I wanted to see what you guys do in this situation. So there's a poster, short stack poster.
Mm-hmm.
And the big lines also short stack.
Right.
Um, we're in the small blind, and so it gets to us unopened. With a poster, obviously, we're all, almost all of us are always raising whatever we have here. Does somebody limping or posting get you to maybe complete here as opposed to raising all the time? And where does that range begin?
Never. I'm never
You're always raising no matter what here.
Yeah, and here's why. The post is not just a blind, it's a capped blind. So i- imagine, imagine you were playing a game that was, you know, a a raked game that's small blind, big blind, we just don't have a limping range in the small blind. If we small blind, big blind, and a third blind there, I still don't want to develop a a limping in the small blind.
Well, that's if some ranges have a limping range for the small blinding cash.
Yeah, they do, they do, and 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 timed games as opposed to raked games, it makes
You get five, four diamonds in the small blind. What do you want to do with it?
I want to raise it.
I call.
Okay.
How about pocket fours?
I want to raise him. Joey wants to call him.
Uh, if there's like multiple limpers and you have part, you know, you could probably limp those, especially if the big line is not prone to squeeze.
Totally agree with that, Larry. I mean, I totally agree with that skate, but this isn't a limper. That's
Actually.
This is a poster.
Yes.
Yeah, but he already checked.
True, right. So he's capped his range even more than the big blind. The big blind is uncapped at this point. The poster is highly capped.
But the big blind can easily shove any raise. He's only got twenty-nine big blinds.
That's true too. Okay. Yep.
And then, so and so Joey, where would you begin raising? Like, do you have a would it be your standard small blind raise here, or would you widen it, make it tighter?
Um.
Nines plus, eight to nine plus.
Math wise, if he was a limper and you're in a small blind, I would use an under the gun range to isolate. But he's not a limper, so.
Hi, Jack?
Me. I don't know. Low jack or under the gun plus two, somewhere in that area.
Oh, wow, okay.
So that's like, that's like uh
Like, if you're on the button and have to get through two people, you have a wide range. But the value of getting through those, of not getting through those two people, you're in position. So you have to get through two people. Um. But you're gonna be out of position if anybody calls.
And Solwa has a, has a, a point here about
So maybe
If you stack sizes, you can, you can have a shove range.
Maybe hijack, low jack.
Yeah.
What's your thoughts on on these short stacks? Uh, do we want to be uh isoling them more with more value and less bluffs cuz they could just shove over the top or like something like that?
Well, your your suited hands go down in value, your small pairs go down in value.
I, I would not shove with um thirty big blinds. I think that's still a little bit deep, but maybe the solver does have like ace, ace, king off, ace, queen off, and maybe like pocket tens.
So this is an interesting, but this is a very interesting cuspy hand, so I'll be honest, I'm probably going to um try to steal this.
Queen ten.
This is a lot wider than what Joey's talking about.
I fold.
Queen ten is a raise.
Yeah, I gotta raise it. So here's
Not limping behind, I'm only limping like suited connectors and smaller pairs.
Yeah.
You cannot limp behind with offsuit broadways.
Yeah.
There's also an argument to me, this hand might go up a little bit in value with two broadways with these short stacks.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, because their their commitment threshold is lower.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So here's my logical argument for the hijack being, and and that you doesn't, that it does, cuz Joey was going for under the gun one, under the gun two. Which is, so the hijack
Well, I was, I don't know if it's between low jack and under the gun two or not.
Yeah.
I was like kind of in the borderline there.
Yep, yep, but here's my argument, doesn't mean it's right. Which is hijack in a standard game has to get through two players who are in position to, you know, who have uncapped ranges before, you know, he he's gotta be at least good enough to get through two
Okay. You can stop there. I, I agree with that already.
Right, okay, good. Now, here's what's wrong with that argument, why, why the hijack is even too tight. Queen ten, queen ten in the hijack is a low, is a very low frequency hand. You can open it, but it's low frequency. You look at this queen ten here. You can't, you can't fold it against this guy's range and a, and a big blind and a big blind. And you definitely don't want to call it, therefore it's a raise, therefore even the hijack might be, you know, just in this individual hand, might be a little tight, and maybe it's even the cutoff, but that's my argument, and I'm gonna raise the queen ten. What happened?
So, yeah, I was in that sort of that zone of like, geez, what the hell do I do with this hand? And um I I thought, if it was king, jack, I'm raising all the time. If it was suited Broadway, I'm raising all the time. This offsuit Broadway, I'm like, this almost seems to be too good to not play against two players who are short stacked and probably not very good. I wound up probably doing the worst. I just, I just limped, I just completed and was gonna go from there versus two players that I thought probably weren't gonna be very good.
Okay.
The the rest of the hand is not, is not really nothing to look at, but it's this spot right here that I was like, cuz this happens a lot, like you get these limps and you have this sort of weird hand and
Yeah, like, I don't think you ever want to call here, uh out of position.
Here's almost a rule. I usually say guidelines cuz you can always find exceptions. But I would say this is a rule. Never limp behind with an offsuit Broadway.
Right. I call that a heuristic cuz I want to start stound smarter.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Um, so if you want a, an actual hand to like look at, I have
Yeah.
Let's take a look here.
While you're putting that one up, I just want to say one thing. On the conversation about the three-way, when I kind of cut everybody off, I just want to make a point. It wasn't cuz I thought anybody was wrong, it was because I thought everyone had made their points. So once we made our points clearly.
I know.
Yeah.
But once you, once you said the logic of the hijack opening into four people and two, he's out of position to
Yeah.
That made, that did make more sense.
Yeah. Oh, and I didn't mean that, but I was talking about the earlier hand, the um the ace queen hand. When um when Joey and Mike were disagreeing and I kind of moved us along. It wasn't cuz I thought anybody was wrong, it was, it was just that I thought both of you made your points really clearly. It's like, okay, we don't know the answer, we both, but we've, everybody's made their point enough that people can evaluate it. All right, ace queen.
Two limps.
So you've got more limpers. Are these, these are posters.
These are posters.
I mean, posters, that's what I meant, posters. Attack, big.
Yeah, how big?
Three, four, five.
I would go four and a half against two posters.
Five and a half.
I'd go four and a half against
Four.
Six and a half.
Ooh, six and a half cuz you're out of position.
Yes.
Yep, let's, let's talk about that because I'm way off then, and I'm interested in the perspective on the six and a half RFI here.
Pot size plus
What's the argument for it, Joey? Cuz I'm, I'm open to it.
Pot size plus one for being out of position.
Okay.
Five and a half is pot size, and then I, for being out of position, I add one more.
All right, I think that makes sense. So that's a good rule. I mean, this is a very rare situation, but I, I did. That makes sense. Let me ask you another question real quick. So uh let's say you're on the button here. These guys limped, what size are you gonna use?
Pot size.
Plus one. Five, right?
Five, five on five.
Okay, thanks. All right. Sorry, Mike, go ahead.
If you were in the, if you were in the big blind here, it would be, you know, and it went limp, limp to you, the finding that uh size would be easy. So this is similar, except that their ranges are are, oh, no, their their ranges are just as are, their ranges are are less than a limp right now. They're uncapped.
They have any two.
Yeah, they have any two, and in the limp, they have their condensed. All right. Ooh.
Call.
Open that side.
I don't, I don't like call. I I, I I don't think I call, I don't remember this hand specifically, but I doubt that I call this. If I'm going to continue, it's gonna be raised.
Yeah, I think the ace queen here is the, is the four bet bluff and fold, but that's the mix, not, not, not
All right, I can see that. I mean, I I just think you're in position, so you did playing this hand in position has some value.
All right, what do the charts say?
Yeah, that's what it is, it's just
All right, first of all, the charts, I could tell you right now, the charts I think have ace queen folding.
They do, but this is a different situation because his, his uh, his pot odds are different than if it was a three bet pot.
I know, I was getting there.
Yeah.
But his, his bet is so small, I don't think we can fold any of our range. But if we're folding to, like if he made it twenty, we'd be folding.
Yeah, I call here.
I mean, is it better to four bet something that would be folded? Or to just call because he gave us the odds to just
Just call. Yes. Plus, you know, especially without any history of the player, right? Like how he played in small blind.
Uh, let's see if I did have history.
Yeah, show the HUD.
Sixty-five?
We bet at four percent.
He barely rated it.
Oh, wow. I might still want to fold.
I, that's a really small sample size for three bet frequency.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, sixty-five.
But his PFR is only six, two.
Ah.
Well, so what strong hands can they have here? Queens, kings, aces, uh I best, uh maybe ace, king on non-drawing hand?
I think the better question to ask is what worse hands would he have here?
Fold.
Maybe, none.
Jackson, well, I mean, you're not you're not ahead, but you're in position and you're deep.
So you're hoping he has
Unfortunately, you're in position with a, with now, with essentially, against his range, you're in position with king, jack now. King, jack off suit.
I mean, you, yeah, you um I just wanna, the pot odds are good enough that I, I want to play this hand in position.
You are dominated by, you are dominated by a pre-flop raise of six and a three bet of four.
And play, and play very cautiously if it's ace, x. Cuz this, I think, is, it might, well, you're blocking ace king, which is nice, but this is gonna be ace king a lot.
But you weren't getting the right pot odds to call against any hand but pocket aces.
Yeah, you get flop two pair, you know, et cetera.
And another stat that I'm looking at, I mean, obviously, we're only considering this because he made such a small three bet.
Yeah.
Which may mean aces only. But look at his aggression frequency. I know it's still a small sample, but that's kind of low.
Yeah.
So that also tells me that he will tend to play honest post-flop, at least by the turn.
Okay, as, as well as the V pip and the pre-flop raise is kind of, yeah, there's like a large gap there.
Okay, can we go back and look at the pot odds? We'll hit after twenty-five percent. So I think generally the rule is that, as Joey said, you're getting pot odds to play this against any hand except aces. Uh, you've got, you've got twenty-five percent equity against anything except aces.
Yes, but you have reverse implied odds, and that's the, that's the scary thing.
You do need to play this cautiously. You're right.
Yeah, okay, but let's play it.
Yep.
Yeah. Yay. Let's lose all our money to aces.
No, pocket nines.
So he checked. He should be, he should be, he should be uh betting this flop.
Yeah.
Oh, probably right. In in a solver world. Now, maybe, not range, but pretty heavily.
When he checks, he probably has like a strong hand or like kings or something like that, I don't know.
He has, this is, this screams of kings.
Kings, yeah.
And not ace, king very often, although we'll see if he check raises. But right now, it's, right now, it smells like like kings, and sure, he can have aces, but aces are so har- highly blocked that when he has aces, I would like to go broke, please.
Yep.
Okay, so we're betting, right?
Queen sometimes.
It's queen sometimes. I would like to go broke, please, to queens.
Yeah.
We bet.
But that's hard, it's, sorry, it's hard for them to queens. There's only one combo of queens.
And there's only one combo of aces.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, before you think about betting, what, in his range, how many streets of value do you think you are getting versus hands that are worse? How many streets of value do you think you are getting versus hands that are worse?
Well, versus worse hands, you might get one.
One or two. Two at most, yeah, like Scotty said.
How many suited hands does he really have?
He has no hearts.
Maybe king jack is the only one.
He does, does this passive player, three back king jack suited?
No.
Oh.
Ace, king suited is his probably only realistic suited hand and it's blocked.
Yeah.
So if we can only getting two streets of value. Checking is also a very good option here. Because we don't have to worry about the flush draw. And his hands that missed are like pocket kings and pocket jacks. And we're not getting three streets from those hands anyhow.
And here's a narrative argument for, for, if we're going to go, when we're deciding which three streets do we want? Do we want? Bet, check, bet, check, bet, bet, you know, bet, bet, check. When we look at that. When we check the, when we check the flop, he is so relieved with his kings that when he checks again and we bet, he may think, oh, that's just a queen.
Yeah, like.
This is not solver world. This is, this is, in his mind, it's very possible that when we bet the flop, he goes, there are two more streets coming. Even though we know we're only going to go for one of them and I need to fold now, I need to get out early. When we check. He is less afraid on the turn and I think that we get calls from more of those kings and jacks that are stubborn. Um, of course, if a heart comes, it's not that we're afraid of it. Uh, that may get, get him to fold them without it or may give him a backdoor. But that's my argument for, that's my argument in favor of checking the flop and going for our two streets on the turn and river.
Yeah, I like.
Joey's, Joey's uh player profile and the check does, points towards. Scotty being correct, this is kings often.
I mean, you can bet there, there's nothing wrong with betting. But I just think there's a very strong argument for checking the flop too.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially if he has a king of hearts and a heart comes, like he's going to want to call one more street. I guess.
Okay.
Yeah, and I feel like this is probably even too big.
Now, it's.
No.
It's less than a third pot, so it's not bad.
It's fun.
Quarter pot, it's good.
Oh, that's true. Yeah, I thought that was a third. No, you're right. That is a quarter. I like that better than a.
Yeah. Don't like that.
Careful. So, so this is, does he have the one combo of ace, maybe nines?
Or the one combo of queens?
Wow.
Or the nines, he doesn't have.
Careful. Careful when you have outs.
Oh, no.
Going broke or, or.
You're not going broke.
Or party or party. Yeah, well, yeah, we're not going, yeah, we're.
You're winning. We have.
We're winning.
Yeah. He can have aces now.
No.
Yeah, or any queens, we'd be queens, right?
You can have ace queen.
Yeah.
Yeah. He, he can have ace, king, but he's going to lose his stack now to ace, king.
Uh, so he just checked, right?
He's checked.
I think we check a lot here. We want his flush draws to get there. If he doesn't, I see the point.
If we put it.
But.
I, I'm. I think we should put out a small bet. Um, just to.
Get us to a pot sized shove?
Yeah, a little lower than pot size shove, just to make a better shove for the river. Because he's not, he's not going to fold any draws he has. If he ha, if he happens to have. It's not typical, but if he has like, say. King, queen of di, or king, jack and diamonds.
So maybe, would you use like twenty five percent here, like again?
Fifteen, twenty big lines around there.
That's twelve.
Or fifteen.
Twenty four.
He brings the pot to ninety.
Fifteen would be ninety. Yeah, fifteen to twenty seems okay.
Yeah.
Because now we're not worried about him having.
Anything.
Yep.
Yeah, we just want him to get there. That's what we want.
Yeah, and we want him to pay and we want him to pay. Um, when he got something, when he doesn't get there, so. You know, so the hands that he checked.
This hand is fascinating. I've never raised.
No, yeah, you can't raise now, right? I mean.
You can't turn your head.
Yeah, just check and hope he, he spazzes off.
Yeah, and if he doesn't, then you, if he doesn't, you get to bluff the, you get to, you get to bet it. Easy, easy game.
Nines? Combo. Oh.
It's just a cooler, but yeah, the, the, the pre-flop and, and flop, I thought were kind of weird.
Yeah. We had two outs. We were not getting the odds to call for our two outs. Were we even getting the implied odds to call for our two outs to stack him? Back then, go back.
On the.
On the, on, on this check raise. Seventeen percent.
Pot odds are seventeen percent.
But, but the, with, with the implied odds. We're going to get ninety more when we get it.
Look at the sizing, it's like small as hell.
It is. But let's see.
It's like, please call.
Oh, yeah.
So if, um, I'll work out the calculation.
Right. We have to put in eleven more to win what is going to be a pot of two hundred and forty. So that's five percent and we are four percent to make it and we're four percent. To hit our, to hit it, you know, two, two cards to cut.
That's going back twenty twenty and having perfect information.
Yeah. No, I'm just looking to see, I'm looking to see if this was right because. I was just looking to see if it was right. If he did turn his hand up, would we call here?
Oh, if he turned his hand up, no.
Of course, uh, you mean a, on the flop?
Yep.
Now, we're about ten percent from the flop.
Because we, we're drawing to an ace, right?
Drawing to an ace, two aces.
We can't even get runner runner straight out of it.
Yeah.
It makes sense when they check the flop, either have a.
What runner runner straight?
Strong hands.
We don't have runner runner straight.
I know, that's what I said.
Oh, I'm sorry. I heard you wrong. Sorry.
I said, we can't even, we don't even have a, we don't even have.
Don't even, I didn't hear the don't.
Backdoor straight or backdoor flush that can bail us out.
No, no. We have two outs twice.
If we saw his hand, we should fold this flop.
Okay, good enough.
But I mean, honestly. What is he doing it with? The hands he's going to play like this would be aces, queens, nines and ace, king.
Not, not, not nines.
You can do nines this way. Although he rarely, he rarely plays nines this way pre-flop.
Yeah.
That was an interesting hand. Okay.
Yeah, maybe we should have folded the turn.
The turn?
What? No.
You mean the flop?
Yeah, the flop, the flop.
Yeah.
Wait, but that's sick. I, there's no way you have two pair on the flop and you had, you think about folding to that small bet.
You can't fold it.
And if you look at what we think his range is.
You were right.
Yep.
He's not doing it with like suited, right? And, and if he is doing it with a, it's only suited ace, king, I guess.
So according to what I'm looking at, if I did the calculations right. We need seventy behind. In order to, with two outs. Our probability to get. Uh, an ace, a boat up. Is eight percent between turn and river.
That's assuming both cards. That's assuming he doesn't jam the turn.
Yep, so we need.
If, if the case queen falls. We're getting stacked.
Yeah, so we need a. Need about seventy uh betting units, big lines behind in order for this to be a call. With two outs, assuming we get to see turn and river. So we do have the implied odds theoretically.
If you're using implied odds post flop, you should really go street by street.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have, we don't have the odds on the flop. Um, with the implied odds of only the flop. We've got to get, we've got to get to see both, both cards with this bet.
Interesting hand.
Yeah, but against the eight, but we are ahead of some of his value range because he can do that with ace, king. And he can do it with ace, king of diamonds specifically. Easily.
You mean hearts?
Yeah, no, I meant, did I? Is that what I meant? I, I've already stolen the screen, so I don't know. The, the back door, I meant the back door one.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
He can't have the front door because the ace.
Right, yeah.
Was on the board.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Yeah, true.
But what he did it with was queens and he got scam. So this is, this is the one dollar, two dollar game. This is the real game, not the fast game.